Oh, you found it?
Yeah, yeah. I found it.
Okay.
It's got scottian, so they're looking at it.
Yeah.
Serious.
Where is the, where is the nameplate?
It's all right. I'll shimmy, shimmy, shake on out if I need to.
All right. I'll shimmy, shimmy, shake on out if I need to.
All right. I'll shimmy, shimmy, shake on out if I need to.
All right. I'll shimmy, shimmy, shake on out if I need to.
It's all right. I'll shimmy, shimmy, shake on out if I need to.
Sorry.
Blue.
Travis, can we do a roll call, please?
Can. Ms. Rhodes?
Present.
Ms. Townsend?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Dubrasky?
Here.
Reverend Hathaway?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Here.
Dr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
And Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. At this time, it's not included as a place marker on the agenda tonight or our business, but I'm going to ask Mr. Aragi to introduce new planning staff. There's been some changes in the planning department, and they'll be speaking to us later on, so rather than waiting until then to introduce them, we'll do it now.
Good evening. I'm Josh Aragi, formerly the environmental director. Been before you guys before with ordinance updates and stuff. Recently, at the August 12th Board of Supervisors meeting, the board opted to restructure the development departments. So they rolled planning, building, and environmental into the community development umbrella, and I'm heading up that department. We do have new planning staff here tonight. Patrick Silva is our principal planner. He comes to us from Alexandria, so a plethora of planning experience, worked some with zoning for housing, things of that nature. So we're looking forward to working with you guys going forward.
Thanks, sir. At this time, anybody have any comments or corrections for the minutes of the July 15th meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I've got one question. On the, one of the AFD pollings, it was the, the la, excuse me. I'm trying to get to the right page, sorry. Mr. Bennett was marked as abstaining. Typically, it's either yea or nay unless you have a conflict. So I was wondering what, he's not here tonight to ask, so I was wondering whether there, anybody had it in their notes, the exact count, vote count?
And we can, we'll go back and listen to the recording. These minutes were done by Kelly before she left, so they were already typed up, but we'll go back and verify on the recording.
Okay.
Any other comments or revisions?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other corrections other than the one thing that's being brought to our attention, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. So we'll approve the minutes pending confirmation of Mr. Bennett's vote for that particular AFD. I don't have that.
AFD dash oh three dash twenty-four.
AFD dash zero three twenty-four. Travis, can you poll the members?
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Dubrasky?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Davis?
Aye.
All right, the minutes were adopted. Again, pending the vote on AFD zero three twenty-four. Now we move to the citizen comment period. Do we have any sign? None signed up, so we'll close the citizen comment period. And Mr. Aragi, do we have any presentations tonight? Any unfinished business? No unfinished business? And we do have one public hearing tonight. It's application for CUP zero three twenty-four Pilot Training Center. The Pilot Travel Center, I'm sorry. And now I'm going to ask Ms. Rose, the public hearing chair, to begin the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have one public hearing. It has been, please note that it's been duly advertised for the appropriate period of time. I'd like to outline the rules for providing comment during the comment period. Each person should come up to the microphone, state their name and their address for the record. Each person will be given three minutes for comments. If they're, they are representing a group, please indicate so, and you'll be given seven minutes to respond. Please direct all comments to the commissioners. Do not engage in side conversations or questions of the applicant. I'll open the, the public hearing for application CUP zero three twenty-four Pilot Travel Center.
Thank you very much, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Again, my name is Patrick Silva, principal planner with the Department of Community Development's Planning Division, here this evening to provide an overview of a conditional use permit request submitted by PFJ Southeast LLC to renew approval for their existing Pilot Travel Center truck stop located at six seven two one Emeas Church Road, Zone EO Economic Opportunity. The zoning ordinance requires conditional use permit approval for any truck stops located in the EO zone. The original conditional use permit approval for this specific Pilot Travel Center took place in December 2008, and pursuant to the conditions of approval from that CUP, came back to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors for renewal in October 2014 after six years in operation. The renewal request that you're considering this evening is the result of conditions of approval from the 2014 CUP renewal, which stated that the CUP would expire after 10 years, which would be this October 2024 unless renewed. Consideration of this current renewal request was duly advertised via newspaper legal ad as well as in letters sent to adjacent property owners. Now, the standards of review for conditional use permits are set forth in Section 98 of the New Kent County zoning ordinance, which staff has analyzed the CUP request in relation to. The request itself was reviewed by all county agencies as well as VDOT. To address some comments of note provided by our reviewing agencies, fire and rescue did provide a comment noting during their review that it is difficult during high, during times of high traffic volume to navigate the property with emergency vehicles specifically in the drive aisle adjacent to the Burger King, which abuts the site. As such, staff has communicated to the applicant the importance of complying with existing and proposed Condition Four, which includes requirements that all parking on the site shall be designated defined in in-marked spaces. In addition, it also requires that no vehicle parking is permitted to occur along or parallel to the entrance road or driveway. Staff has confirmed that the use continues to comply with the land uses envisioned for this location by the comprehensive plan, which designates the entire area around the I-64 interchange as economic opportunity, and furthermore finds that the continuation of the use would not promote undue negative effects on the health, safety, and general welfare of New Kent County residents. Thus, subject to the conditions of approval detailed within the staff report for this docket item, staff is recommending, is recommending approval of the conditional use permit request and are available for any questions you may have. I did also want to take a moment to give the applicant Ross Shaver, attending tonight's meeting on behalf of PFJ Southeast LLC, a moment to introduce himself and speak to the conditional use permit request on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Ross Shaver. I'm with Pilot Travel Centers. My address is five five zero eight Loness Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee, three seven nine oh nine. Really, I'm here on behalf of Pilot to really answer any questions that you have. As Patrick stated, we've been a part of the business community for 16 years and look forward to continuing our business partnership with, with New Kent County and having a successful business. So again, I'm here to really answer any questions that you may have about our operation, existing business, and business in the future. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from commissioners?
Yes, Madam Chair, do you have a question? I guess regarding the fire comments and the, as far as accessing the property, and I guess maybe staff can answer this too, is this, is this heavy volume or is it parking that's occurring?
So the fire reviewers did indicate that during times of high traffic volume, the issues are in relation to parking in areas that are either not striped for parking spaces or adjacent to the drive aisle, which again is prohibited by the existing and proposed conditions of the CUP.
And does that mean there's no parking available on the sites while they're doing that, or is it just convenience for the people to stop there, I guess, to park?
Yeah, sure, it's probably a combination of both at times. Like, I just left the site, and there was one truck that was parked in a striped area where he should not be, and there was probably still a handful of stalls left, so that, I would say that's convenience. There's going to be times where, you know, the lot's full, both ourselves and our competitor across the street, his lot is probably full. This isn't just a problem here in the county, it's really kind of a problem across the nation where, you know, these drivers have limited areas to park. Obviously, we're trying to serve our customer base as well as possible. What, what I think the issue is, is there's areas on the lot, and as you enter the main access that is striped, and we have significant amount of signage that says no parking. Our requirement is for our staff, especially our general manager, to walk the lot at least once a day, if not each shift. And then during the day, they will knock on doors and try to move those trucks. At night, it becomes, becomes a little bit of a safety issue. If we have enough staff, then we'll go out there and knock on those doors to try to make them move, but obviously, we're just a business, we don't have legal enforcement. So we would ask, hey, the sheriff's office and partner with them, anytime they can come on the lot, ask trucks to move, write tickets, et cetera. So really, we're limited to putting up signage, striping, and having our staff knock on doors and try to get them moved, but we can't make them move since we don't have legal authority from an enforcement standpoint.
So I guess, as a property owner, you can't require them to move? Is it on the property itself, or is it right away to the?
Yes, where I'm seeing the issue is it's, there's an easement. So we kind of, the property line, it cuts down the main access, so one property owner owns half, and it looks like we own half. And I'd have to verify that with a survey, but the survey that I saw before I left the office today is what it showed. But as a property owner, I don't have legal enforcement to be able to make, make them move in a sense of, I can't, you know, I can call a tow truck, but calling a tow truck for an 18-wheeler is quite a feat. But actually, making them physically move, I have, you know, I can't do that. It would, so, so again, this is something we deal with across the country, we do everything we can. There is a significant amount of signage out there that says no parking, things are striped properly. I think if, if the sheriff's department showed up and wrote a few tickets, it would probably nip some of that in the bud.
Yeah, that's another question, too, if this, if, if that area can be enforced by the sheriff's office, which I don't know, I mean, it has to meet certain parameters with the signage requirements and the, and maybe striping itself?
Based on a quick review of the New Kent County Code, Section 70 of the county code pertains to stopping, standing, and parking in. Based on a quick read, there's a provision that if you're going to park on private property, you need the express or implied consent of the owner, and signs indicate that you do not have that consent. So that would be a violation of our county code.
And I know the fire, okay, and I know the fire also read too, where the fire chief or the fire marshal can, they can, of course, at any time, not at any time, but they can designate a fire lane if that would be workable.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a very large access, so I don't think there's an issue of emergency services getting in and out. It's obviously, if you did have a fire, you don't want them parked along the curb lines, and that's where the parking is occurring. But actually, entering the site and exiting the site to get in and out, I mean, it's a very large access. So I don't, I don't think that's an issue from what I've seen. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So if we were to sort of like sum this all up together, you're basically going to come back in and do an overhaul of the parking design layout?
No, there's really not, from, from what I've seen, so I have a civil engineering background, as a degree, and designed these travel centers all over the country. I really don't see anything else that we can do. You have a large access, which you need for semi-truck vehicles. You have striped areas showing the traveling public that you're not allowed to park here, and then we have no parking signs very regularly along the curb line. So besides our staff going out there and asking parked vehicles to move, and again, this is not on public right of way, this is on the private property that's, that's an issue. So they're just not in the designated truck parking stalls is the issue, they're kind of in the main access, which every emergency service across the nation wants people off the curb lines and in the designated stalls. But from an emergency response standpoint, what I've seen is not a problem, but you don't want a problem to be there if you have an emergency is the situation, if that makes sense. But we do re-stripe our lots every two years. So the law, you know, from what I saw, the striping is there, but if, if there's ever an issue of the striping not being there, then, then our facility services team would stripe it.
For the parking areas where the problem is occurring, could bollards be put up or flexible bollards where?
Yeah, you would create a safety liability issue by doing that, because if you're having vehicles.
I'm talking about the kind of emergency vehicles could roll right over, you know, they're hinged at the bottom. You saw what I'm saying, like on the interstate and other places where they have those, where it would deter people from parking, they're not supposed to be there, but emergency services could roll right over them if they needed to.
Sure, yeah. We've never done anything like that on our lot before. Again, I think, I think there's somewhat of a safety liability standpoint there from, from that standpoint. That's just not something that we've ever, I mean, obviously, you get into a component where, you know, vehicles are getting damaged, right? Then you're creating, then, then you're having your emergency services team come out there very frequently. You don't want that to occur either. And there's kind of this fine balance that you, you want to obviously have your site operate and have people park exactly where they're supposed to, but you also don't want to be a nuisance to the emergency services team when they're having to come out there on a regular basis either.
Madam Chair, one, one other question, follow-up. The parking, there's not overnight parking, right?
No, there is overnight parking.
Are there overnight parking in this affected area we're talking about, or is it?
Our intent is for them not to. Our intent is, you know, our, our staff is going out there knocking on the doors. Obviously, we have a little bit of a reduced staff at night because you're, you're not as busy right at two in the morning. So as, as long as there's two staff that can go out there, knock on that door, ask them to leave, then that's what's occurring.
Madam Chair, I have a comment as well. Looking at the site plan, the site plan really shows no point of non-easement in the sense of egress, ingress to the property. And I know, I know, I've been to the site many times, I know exactly where you're talking about, where the truck is parking. I, when you talk about striping, I know that that area right now is currently striped for no parking. And I understand that. If you look at the site plan, the site plan shows basically an ingress of one lane and then an egress of basically a lane and a half, two lanes when you get to the red light. It may be something that can deter that if we use that more as a drive lane in the future. I'm not saying that, I think that the business implications of what you guys are doing is great for New Kent, especially to love interchange, but I think that that may be something we want to look at, and some of that is not on your property, and I know that.
Sure.
And, and that may be something we need to address with the other property owners in that district for where the lanes are paved, where we're having an issue. If that becomes an issue with fire and EMS, then we need to be resolving that, and maybe not so much as you, you guys are continuing to resolve what we have. But there is basically one lane in and two lanes out, and that's what we need to focus on, and not so much a parking lane. And maybe that we need to, if we're going to do re-striping in the next year, year, two years, then we need to re-stripe that, so it's one lane in, one lane out.
Sure. We're happy to work with you guys from that standpoint, and, and again, I'm trying to use my experience of, you know, building travel centers from an engineering and, you know, traffic standpoint all across the nation, and from what I see is, you want more access than enough, and we've got striping there, we've got parking signage there. I'm not sure what else we can do from a value standpoint to resolve the situation.
So, Mr. Chairman, just a side note, I'm looking at the GIS map, it was done, it looks like it was done before Burger King was there, and there's an 18-wheeler just sitting right on the, the striped line, you know, so it's, I'm sure it's a common place, but it does seem to be a, a very packed house that day.
Sure.
And I can understand that.
Well, again, it's a problem across the nation. There's just not enough parking for, I mean, freight, you know, freight is what moves our country, and there's just not enough parking. I mean, we, we literally have DOTs call us of, hey, how can we partner with you? And I'm sure they're calling our competitors. People are trying to figure out how to resolve this issue.
It seemed like it was a few years ago, there was even the, the rest areas and that, there was no overnight parking for trucks, and all of a sudden, now we see billboards up saying we have 10 spots left.
Yes, sir.
And I can see that the problem has gotten so big that we've even opened up those to, to truck stops.
Yes, sir. I mean, it's a good problem to have for our country, but we're kind of in the birthing pains of, of it. Yes, sir.
I have a question, and it's probably really for, for staff. Condition 12 of the, of the draft CUP, it talks about within, within 30 days, they'll, they'll submit a request for a determination on applicability of 98 dash 874, which is the performance standards for truck stops. Is this, is this, I'm getting a little bit of an echo, sorry. Is this truck stop grandfathered in?
This is some condition language that is a carryover from the 2014 CUP. It's sort of a pro forma to confirm that the, the, the design standards by which the, the given business is operating conforms with our existing code as much as possible. So that's really just to ensure whether those, those standards are still applicable, confirming the extent to which the existing business is meeting them. But this was a, a condition that was also included in the 2014 CUP as well.
Okay. Well, I guess my, my, my next question, that it, does it meet, has it, has it met all the, all the criteria? One of the, the, one of the first criteria is a minimum of 15 acres. This is only six, six point something. How, how is that going to be potentially rectified?
I believe the existing CUP, the process that they went through allowed the use on this particular property. You know, nowadays, and I think, Mr. Hathaway, you may have some background on this, but I believe the, after this, our, is when we adjusted the zoning ordinance to add truck stop?
That's correct.
Yeah.
The truck stop was provided prior to.
Okay, so, so it, it is grand, grandfathered in, okay. Well, I guess my, my, my question was, since there is that obligation for them to request an applicability determination on a, on a, on the property, and we're, we're already authorizing another, another CUP, suppose that something comes out of that applicability determination, then we're going to have to come back, come back and, and readjust the CUP?
Not necessarily. I mean, the, when we look at the conformance, you know, with that section of the county code, we would take into consideration, you know, the fact that this was an existing use prior to adding truck stop. So in, you know, in terms of the code, it would kind of be a non-conforming use in that regard.
Okay.
So it was legal at the time that it was permitted, and it's been operating continuously since then.
Okay.
So we would take that into account when we look through those, you know, conditions that are specific to a truck stop before we wrote a zoning opinion letter.
Okay. All right. I, I just, it, it just seems as though it's a little bit the, the cart before the horse, that you should do, go ahead and do the applicability determination, even if, even if everything is still grandfathered and everything's consistent, or it's, it's a non-conforming, you make the determination that it's non-conforming, but that should be part of the record for the CUP. Is, am I, am I off base there?
No, that, that makes sense to me. Based on my reading of that provision, it doesn't require any enforcement. I think it's just that the property owner must ask the zoning administrator to look at it, and then the zoning administrator can decide going forward what of this needs to be enforced, rather than if, there are some things in here that postdate the original CUP grant, that that would void the CUP, it's just sort of looking.[670.91]
But if if there's ever an issue of the striping not being there, then then our facility services team would stripe it.
Uh, good.
For the parking areas where the problem is occurring, could bollards be put up or flexible bollards?
Yeah, you would create a safety liability issue by doing that because if you're having.
I'm kind of talking about the kind of emergency vehicles could roll right over, you know, they're hinged at the bottom. You saw what I'm saying, like on the interstate and other places where they have those where it would deter people from parking. They're not supposed to be there, but emergency services can roll right over them if they needed to.
Sure, yeah, we we've never done anything like that on our lot before. Again, I think I think there's somewhat of a safety liability standpoint there from from that standpoint. That's just not something that we've ever, I mean, obviously, you get into a component where, you know, vehicles are getting damaged, right? Um, then you're creating, then then you're having your emergency services team come out there very frequently. You don't want that to occur either. And there's kind of this fine balance that you you want to obviously have your site operate and and have people park exactly when they're supposed to. But you also don't want to be a nuisance to the emergency services team where they're having to come out there on a regular basis either.
Madam Chair, one one other question, follow up. The parking, there's not overnight parking, right?
No, there is overnight parking.
Are there overnight parking in this affected area we're talking about or?
Our intent is for them not to. Our intent is, you know, our our staff is going out there knocking on the doors. Obviously, we have a little bit of a reduced staff at night because you're you're not as busy right at two in the morning. So as as long as there's two staff that can go out there, knock on that door, ask them to leave, then that's what's occurring.
Madam Chair, I have a comment as well. Looking at the site plan, um, the site plan really shows no point of non-easement um, in the sense of egress ingress to the property. And I know, I know, I've been to the site many times. I know exactly where you're talking about with the parking. I, when you talk about striping, I know that that area right now is currently striped for no parking. And I understand that. Um, if you look at the site plan, the site plan shows basically an ingress of one lane and then an egress of basically a lane and a half, two lanes when you get to the red light. It may be something that can deter that if we use that more as a drive lane in the future. Um, not saying that, I think that the business implications of what you guys are doing is great for New Kent, especially the two level interchange. Um, but I think that that may be something we want to look at. And some of that is not on your property, and I know that.
Sure.
Um, and and that may be something we need to address with the other property owners in that district. Um, for where the lanes are paved, where we're having an issue. If that becomes an issue with firing EMS, then we need to be resolving that. And maybe not so much as you, you guys are continuing to resolve what we have. Um, but there is basically one lane in and two lanes out, and that's what we need to focus on. And not so much a parking lane. And maybe that we need to, if we're going to do restriping in the next year, year, two years, then we need to restripe that. So it's one lane in, one lane out.
Sure, we're we're happy to work with you guys um, from that standpoint. And and again, I'm trying to use my experience of, you know, building travel centers from an engineering and, you know, traffic standpoint all across the nation. And uh, from what I see is you you want more access than enough. Um, and we've got striping there, we've got parking signage there. I'm not sure what else we can do from a value standpoint to resolve the situation.
So, um, Mr. Chairman, um, just a side note, I'm looking at the GIS map. It was done, it looks like it was done before Burger King was there. And there's an eighteen wheeler just sitting right on the the striped lines. You know, so it's, I'm I'm sure it's a commonplace, but uh, uh, it it does seem to be a a very packed house that day.
Sure.
And I can understand that.
Well, again, it's a problem across the nation. There's just not enough parking for, I mean, freight, you know, freight is what moves our country. And there's just not enough parking. I mean, we we literally have DOTs call us of, hey, how can we partner with you? Uh, and I'm sure they're calling our competitors. Um, people are trying to figure out how to resolve this issue.
It seemed like it was a few years ago, there was even the the uh, rest areas and that, there was no overnight parking for trucks. And all of a sudden, now we see billboards up saying we have ten spots left. And I can see that the problem has gotten so big that uh, we've even opened up those to to truck stops.
Yes, sir, I mean, it's a good problem to have for our country, but we're kind of in the birthing pains of of it, yes, sir.
Um, I have a question and it's pro- probably really for for staff. Condition twelve of the uh, of the um, draft CUP. Uh, it talks about within within thirty days, they'll they'll submit um, it a request for a determination on applicability of ninety-eight dash eight seventy-four, which is the performance standards for truck stops. Um, is this, is this, I'm getting a little bit of an echo, sorry. Is this truck stop grandfa- grandfathered in?
So, this is some condition language that is a carryover from the twenty fourteen CUP. It's sort of a pro forma to con- confirm that the 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 design standards by which the the uh, the given business is operating conforms with our existing code as much as possible. Um, so that's really just to ensure whether those those standards are still applicable, the confirming the extent to which the existing business is meeting them. But this was a a condition that was also included in the twenty fourteen CUP as well.
Um, well, I guess my my ne- my next question, that it does, does it meet? Has it, has it met all the all the criteria? One, one of the the, one of the first criteria is a minimum of fifteen acres. This is only si- six, six point something. How how is that going to be potentially rectified?
I believe the existing CUP, the process that they went through allowed the use on this particular property. Um, you know, nowadays, and I think, Mr. Hathaway, you may have some background on this, but um, I believe the after this are, is when we adjusted the zoning ordinance to add truck stop?
Yeah. Okay, so so it it is grand, grandfathered in, okay. Well, I guess my 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 question was, since there is that obligation for them to request an applicability determination on a, on a, on the property, and we're, we're already authorizing another C, another CUP. Suppose that something comes out of that applicability determination, then we're going to have to come back, come back and and readjust the CUP?
Uh, not necessarily. I mean, the, when we look at the conformance, you know, with that section of the county code, we would take into consideration, you know, the fact that this was an existing use prior to adding truck stop. Um, so in, you know, in terms of the code, it would kind of be a non-conforming use in that regard. So it was legal at the time that it was permitted, and it's been operating continuously since then. Um, so we would take that into account when we look through those, you know, conditions that are specific to a truck stop before we wrote a zoning opinion letter.
Okay, all right. I I just, it it just seems as though it's a little bit the 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 cart before the horse that that you should do, go ahead and do the applicability determination, even if, even if everything is still grandfathered and everything's consistent or it's it it's a non-conforming, uh, you make the determination that it's non-conforming, but that should be part of the record for the CUP. Is, am I, am I off base there?
No, that 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 makes sense to me. Um, based on my reading of that provision, um, it doesn't require any enforcement. I think it's just that the property owner must ask the zoning administrator to look at it, and then the zoning administrator can decide going forward what of this needs to be enforced. Rather than if there are some things in here that postdate the original CUP grant, that that would void the CUP, it's just sort of looking, looking at staff to see what do we need to be looking going forward. Because some of these, I'm looking at um, just at least what's on municode on the website. These appear to be two thousand and eight and twenty fourteen provisions. And I believe this CUP predates those. So.
Ms. Rose?
Ms. Mr. Mar, go ahead.
The the number thirteen then a- answers a lot of the questions for the future. Because once this is approved, it's enforced unless it ceases to run for one year. So we don't have to come back to this again. Okay, so I I don't know why we went ten years on this previously. That was just a provision we wanted to make for that. Yeah, they're all jumping up now.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, after this, this application came to us prior to us having anything on the books, and it was coming in as a, by right, was, am I correct, Mr. Hathaway? So, um, there was some negotiating done at that time to sort of uh, to get something started, but at the time that it originally started, we were, we never had a truck stop. So this was the very first step that we ever took.
That that's correct. This is our first truck stop in the county, and in fact, this did not start as a truck stop. It started as a convenience store and kind of morphed into a truck stop. And we knew, even though we didn't have a truck stop in our ordinance, we knew that that was more than just a convenience store. So, um, we made them go through the conditional use permit process for a truck stop use. There was a lot of opposition from the adjacent property owners. I believe that was the reasoning uh, for the ten year period. Um, and because this was our our first truck stop in the county, so we wanted to give it some time, see how the conditions that we imposed worked, and if anything needed to be changed, we would have that ten year period to review and then change the conditions if if needed.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
If approved this time, there is no expiration, or does this come again in ten years?
So if this current CUP renewal were to be approved, um, the CUP would run with the land until such time that the use were to cease operation for a year. Um, so it would not be a sort of preset approval as was the case in the two thousand and fourteen CUP.
The only, the only way it would be, would come up for a- any type of modification is if they, if they uh, applied for a significant change to to the operation or to the property.
That's right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, too, also, wouldn't it be the cases if they violated any of the current agreements that were in the uh, set record, that we do have the right to go back to look at it after this point in time?
Uh, so my understanding is yes, if if any of the condition of, uh, conditions of approval were to be violated, these are enforceable conditions by which the CUP could be brought back for reevaluation.
Okay.
So.
Go. Yeah. Any, any other questions for either staff or the applicant?
Um, I guess we would want to be public comment period. And there are no um, there are no members, so I will close the public hearing and turn back over to the chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Any discussion uh, from any of the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I, a concern that I would have is the condition at this Interstate Exchange in two thousand and eight and then in twenty fourteen is substantially different than what it is today. And having an unlimited uh, or a kind of a permanent CUP approved, I guess I would feel better if this were to come up, if 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 it could be scheduled to come up for review again. Because the landscape in that part of the county has changed tremendously, and it's going to change even more.
And on the other hand, though, the conditions that are already set forth, if they were violated, then we would automatically come back and review this.
Any other discussions? Um, the, I'll say the one uh, issue or concern I would have with the is, and I think it's a one that can be corrected, again, is access, public safety access. So if we do have the means through the sheriff's office to enforce um, parking regulations there, or if the fire chief or the fire marshal de- deems it to be a fire lane and can enforce it as a fire lane, then that's something that we can, that can be done based on their decisions. You know, they're the ones that are expressing their concerns, but they also have the power um, to, in at least the fire department's case, to designate it as a fire lane, and then that can be an enforceable fire lane. And again, another way to solve the problem. So um, maybe it's not necessarily, doesn't have to be in our hands to solve it. Again, we do understand, I do understand that, you know, especially during busy times, and again, it's what you want to see. We want to see full parking lots and 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 businesses, you know, brimming with people and 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 vehicles in your case. So we don't want to diminish that, but at the same time, again, we want to maintain that access for public safety.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just one, one comment, I guess, that uh, eases my mind a little bit is the fact that the security and the safety and security plan has to be updated and and resubmitted annually. So that we will get a number of bites at the, bites at the apple, so to speak, if if there, if there are continuing issues.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Any other commissioners? If not, uh, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. In order to address and protect and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution number PC one four dash two four to forward the application CUP dash oh three dash two four to the New Kent County Board of Supervisor with a favorable recommendation. I further move that the planning commission finds that this proj- uh, project to be in s- sustainable accord with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. So we have a motion uh, to approve um, PC fourteen twenty-four. Um, Travis, can you poll members?
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Donbroski?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Lower Show?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
And Mr. Davis?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. All right, next order of business, um, yes, no more uh, public hearings for the night. Uh, new business is next. Uh, we have consideration of PC thirteen dash twenty-four, a waiver request for Curtis Contracting Incorporated. And um, we'll hear from Mr. Hathaway. And this is not a public hearing, so.
That's correct. This is not a public hearing, and thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and and members of the the commission. Um, again, this evening, you have a request from Curtis Contracting Incorporated uh, for an exception to the architectural standards found in Article twenty-eight of the New Kent County Code. Article twenty-eight is the Commerce Corridor Overlay District Regulations. Uh, the exception request would allow Curtis Contracting uh, to construct a five hundred foot long prefabricated, prefabricated metal building uh, that is fifteen feet in height and thirty-eight feet wide. Uh, the site is located at their truck repair uh, facility located at seventy-four fifty Ready Mix Drive in Eltham. Uh, in the staff report, you have excerpts from the section of the code that regulates um, the Commerce Corridor Overlay District. Um, and the sections that he are, um, that they are applying, applying for an exception to. Um, chapter ninety-eight, section ten seventy-one, um, provides a process uh, for exceptions. Um, and that process involves a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors. Um, the Planning Commission's recommendations and Board of Supervisor's decision shall be based on the six criteria um, listed in section ten seventy-one. Um, those criteria include the exception is reasonably necessary due to physical constraints of the site. The location of the proposed building will be parallel to Route thirty-three. It will be very visible to Route thirty-three. Again, the reason for this request, too, is that Curtis Contracting has recently purchased thirty-six uh, dump trucks with snowplow, uh, plows to attach to them. And they would like to provide some shelter for those new dump trucks, um, and some screening from Route thirty-three. Um, they're not required to provide shelter or screening. They could just park the dump trucks along Route thirty-three without the building. Um, but definitely to protect their investment, they they would like to shelter those. Uh, we do believe that this is the best location for that. They could put this building on other parts of the property, but that just means what's stored in other areas would have to be moved to um, along the the roadway and it would be visible. And currently, there are other vehicles, um, tractor trailers, snow plows. There's some materials, too, um, that's currently stored on site. Um, the second exception, the second finding would be the exception would not unreasonably lower the level of service on effective roads. Uh, again, uh, the purpose of the building is to house thirty-six dump trucks, but those dump trucks could be located on the property whether or not the shelter is there. It will produce no additional traffic, so therefore, staff finds that it will not impact the level of service of the roads. Um, next criteria is design and location of the proposed on-site improvements are compatible with the existing uh, developed sites contiguous with and near to the site. Um, a prefabricated metal building within the industrial area that uh, this site is located in, um, all the buildings are prefabricated metal buildings. Um, and even a little further down the road to their construction site, um, those are also prefabricated metal buildings. So we do not believe uh, that the proposed building will change the character of the area. And I have some pictures, the same pictures that you have in your staff report. Um, but this building here is a metal building, and then there's a biodiesel facility, too, which is also a metal building, um, both very visible from Route thirty-three. Uh, this is a rendering of uh, the proposed building. Uh, no, that's the front side. The back side will be fronting Route thirty-three. Um, and we'll look something similar like this. This is um, just west of the proposed site. Um, this is Curtis Contracting's construction yard. Um, and this will be a similar view of what's being proposed as as well. Um, the good thing about this site versus that site is the current vegetative screening. Uh, this is looking directly across the street from where the building will go. There is an existing um, tree line there. This is looking westward from the site. You can see the tree line um, on the property. And this is looking eastward towards uh, West Point. Um, backing up, looking westward, you can see that this tree line doesn't extend uh, the length of the site. And that is one of the conditions that we are proposing. Um, because the building will extend the length of the tree line. Um, we are recommending a condition that the tree line buffer be extended uh, the length of the building. Also, there's a second rec- rec- recommendation that a fifty-foot tree line be extended along Ready Mix Drive, uh, therefore blocking the side view of the building, too. So uh, there will not be a lot of visibility when the new buffers are installed. Oops, lost the presentation. Oh, that, that's fine. Um, the zoning of the property is zoned industrial. In fact, when we drafted the Commerce Corridor Overlay District, we went back and forth as to whether we should include industrial uh, areas in the overlay district. Uh, but we felt comfortable moving forward with this exception provision so that we can look at uh, these issues on a case-by-case basis. So staff is recommending approval um, of the building. Uh, we feel that the six criteria listed in section ten seventy-one are satisfied. Um, and therefore, we're recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, I have a question. Um, in the talking points of the buffer, I I noticed when we looked at our landscape ordinances, it doesn't necessarily talk about density. But can we specify that we make sure that the landscape has a denseness that you, you know, you could put loblolly pines in, but you could see through loblollies. Your, your, your canopy is at the top, but can we require maybe something more a little dense at the bottom?
Yes, we can definitely. Add, add, add a provision in there to um, to deal with the denseness of of the planning. We'll do some research on that, but yes, we can.
The one other question, yeah, I, I can't remember.
I believe it's a solar.
Yeah, we were talking about.
Fair.
Impervious, visually impervious, I think is what we, what we said, you can't see through it. Now that's, I think that would be difficult with a ten-foot buffer along Ready Mix Drive.
Right.
Could that buffer be wide?
Well, as as you see, you're dealing with a very limited area right here. That, that's why ten-foot was selected. With the length of that building, it's going to be difficult to go more than ten feet. And I'm trying to get to, there is a slide that shows where the building would be located, taking up most of that frontage. Yeah, um, this hatched area, it goes pretty far over uh, to the property. So it's, you you're going to be limited to get in.
But in theory, they could shorten the building if we wanted more screening, right?
Um, that, that could be a a requirement. Um, although I I will share with you, even though it shouldn't impact our our decision-making, um, the owner has shared with me that the building has already been purchased, so. But again, that's not on the county, that's on the owner for not checking with us first prior to moving forward.
Ms. Hathaway, the, if this building wasn't built, they would not be coming back to us with any buffering.
Right.
And there would be thirty-six tractor, uh, dump trucks.
And snow plows.
And snow plows facing the, so that, so because they're building the building, they're having to spend money on the ones, the one, the chain link on Ready Mix Drive, which I don't see anybody's going to see too much of that anyway. Well, they're going way beyond what they would need to do, am I correct?
Yes, uh, that, that, that's correct. I mean, like you said, they, they're not required to put the building there. Um, definitely, it benefits them, it protects their investment. Um, but there is no requirement to have the building there.
Well, um, Ms. Hathaway, I would also maybe suggest, too, maybe if, and if it's not enough room to have that um, necessary thickness of shrubs or whatever's placed there, that we leave the option to the applicant, they can always cover that end up with an a, an acceptable material like it's, exists in the overlay. You know, if they want to break it, if they want to do something, that is an acceptable equivalent. You know, can we leave that to be their choice?
That, that, that is true.
You know, I agree with the, the frontage along thirty-three uh, providing the, you know, a visual barrier. Um, and with that, too, and if we approve it, that the existing vegetative butter, buffer along, uh, Eltham Road, is the existing, that can't be cut at a future point. And is that, um, is that something we need, we need to add, or just by virtue that we're saying it is an existing buffer that we're in this consideration that we, or?
We, we can definitely add it, add language to emphasize that.
Yeah. But, but again, for me, you know, the end, end, you know, when people see the end of it, um, again, it, it could be their choice, I think. I think it doesn't really matter as far as the, they're kind of complying with the ordinance. Or if they put the screening up, then they're complying with what we've asked them to do.
That, that's correct. And as far as the existing buffer, too, um, we can add language that that can't be removed. But, um, I did not mention previously, there is a conditional use permit on the property also, and that requires, uh, that, that vegetative buffer along, along the frontage. So per that conditional use permit, they can't, uh, touch that.
If I could add, too, the area that we're looking at on Ready Mix, that little smaller stretch, I would be more careful with vegetation there because, one, you're going to obstruct your site distance coming up. Sometimes the vegetation has a way of getting away with you and going out towards the road. So I would say that if you want to do a buffer or it's, or something to, to stop the sight of it, well, then you go with a solid mass, like a sheeting or a plexi fence or whatever. But on this next site over here, not the, not the parcel that we're looking at, I would still even continuation having a buffer on that piece of property if that were, were to be developed. Then that way, you have this buffer and this buffer, Ready Mix is right here in the middle, and it really sort of type, takes out the sight of what's behind it.
Just for following you, um, you're referring to the site on the other side of, of Ready Mix?
Where the Ready Mix Road is?
Uh-huh.
There's like, was it, it's ten-foot wide?
Yes.
I, sometimes vegetation can get away with you. One, you want to be able to get the moor up to the fence to keep the fence clean. So you have to give at least five feet there. So you've already cut the bushes back this way.
Yes.
Then those bushes kind of have a way of approaching over into the road. So I would, I would be kind of careful about what would go there. But like I say, later on, we get another site come for that next parcel on, on thirty-three. Still have the, the buffer continue, so it'd still be a solid buffer. Um, you don't see as much, you know, you may see some, but, you know, seeing some is not as bad as seeing all of it.
And Cur- Curtis does not own the, the parcel on, on the other side of Ready Mix, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Hathaway, have, um, since the overlay has been instituted or approved, have we had any other, uh, applicants? I mean, has anybody built to the requirements of the overlay?
This is actually the, the second request that has come before you since the overlay has been approved.
Oh, that's right, our doors for the.
For Station Six.
Right, okay. Any other questions for Mr. Hathaway? All right, any other discussion, uh, by the commissioners? Um, hearing none, do we have a motion?
Just so I'm clear, um, so I can, um, write this correctly. Um, what I'm hearing is for the first condition, uh, that we include language regarding the density of plantings along Eltham Road. And we will do that. And for the second condition, uh, we've, we've mentioned a couple of different options. One was that it, the fence be constructed out of the proper material that's permitted in the ordinance. Or, um, did we want to do anything with vegetation? I mean, there are some good points made as to why we should limit the vegetation, but.
Yeah, the only point I was making, if, if they otherwise meet the, the overlay requirements for that end, you know, then it'd be a moot point to force that, require them to add, um, some other visual screening. If, if the end meets it, um, if, if it does not, then, then I think the screening should apply. So that's my opinion. I mean, it's not.
Of, of the building? It will be metal, prefabricated metal.
Yeah, the, the overlay requirements is, it talks about different building materials to make it, I guess, a prettier view, as it were, going down thirty-three.
Yes, and metal is not one of those.
Right, right. So you see oftentimes, you see, you know, the, either brick veneer or something else that's, um, to meet those requirements. So do we have anybody who wants to capture that or something else in a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, in order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt Resolution Number PC dash one-three dash two-four to forward the exception request by Curtis Contracting Incorporated to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation subject to the following conditions. The existing vegetation buffer along Eltham Road be extended among, along the frontage of the entire property to effectively screen the entire length of the new building on State Route thirty-three, Eltham Road. Also, a landscape buffer of at least ten feet in a width, in width and fifty feet in length be installed along the Ready Mix Drive, beginning at the corner of the fence located at the intersection of Eltham Road and Ready Mix Drive. The purpose of this landscape buffer is to screen the side view of the new building from State Route thirty-three, Eltham Road, with the provisions that we had spoken of, making sure that it require, it falls within the requirements of the overlay district.
Thank you, Mr. DeBroski. So we have a motion to approve, uh, PC thirteen twenty-four with the conditions noted. Um, Travis, can you poll the members?
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Lower Show?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. And motion carries? Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Chairman's Report. Um, Mr. Bennett, uh, did send me, and, um, I've spoken with him a couple of times. Uh, he's on vacation in Europe right now, so that's why he's not here. Um, so we'll give him a pass tonight. Um, but he did, uh, did forward me a, a Chairman's Report, uh, to read to you tonight, which I'm glad to do. So, uh, Ms. Bennett says, since our last business meeting of July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, um, and I'm actually reading something that we've already, uh, dealt with, uh, as far as the introduction of, um, Mr. Araghi and Mr. Silva and, and others, uh, they're new to the planning staff. So he certainly wanted to welcome, uh, welcome you as well. Um, we look forward to working with you. Um, so far, it's, um, uh, even though it's only been a couple of weeks since I've met you, it's, uh, uh, so far, it's been, uh, very good and very responsive so far. Um, thank you, Mr. Special Mr. Silva this afternoon, uh, throwing things at us at, as it was coming in at the, the last few minutes before the meeting tonight. So again, it is appreciated. Um, and we do know that, uh, staffing has always had a premium, so we always appreciate your hard work. So, thank you. Um, and, uh, next, Mr. Bennett, uh, in his, his words says, for myself, I would like, I would be of some remiss not to mention the departures of Mr. Kenny Vaughn and Mrs., uh, Ms. Kelly Laduke. Uh, Mr. Vaughn, he believes spent twenty-four years at New Kent, um, with many of those years of not called as the zoning administrator. And Ms. Laduke's tenure was sixteen years and several positions in the planning, uh, department. Um, I will certainly echo those, um, sentiments. Um, and, uh, so they, they were very valuable, um, to New Kent County and to us as a planning commission. Um, so they, they certainly will be missed, um, and, uh, we certainly want to recognize their, their service, uh, uh, to the county and to the planning commission. Um, Mr. Bennett goes on to say, in today's society, when the average tenure of an individual at one employment position is just over four years, Mr. Vaughns and Ms. Laduke's lengthy history and contributions should be recognized. So Mr. Vaughn and Ms. Laduke, um, you assisted New Kent County with positive changes for the future. With that, he offers a hearty thank you, and I hope that, I hope and maybe along with my commissioner colleagues, Mr. Vaughns and Ms. Laduke's future is forward and bright. I personally wish them both all the best in the days to come. Let's see, um. And finally, I encourage the entire planning commission to greet and exchange thoughts and ideas with our new community development planning department administration as you develop your own working relationships. Um, he believes that we are in good hands with, uh, Mr. Araghi and, and his new staff, so. And that is the Chairman's Report. Um, next, uh, we'll go, uh, staff reports. Um, Mr. Lower Show, do you have anything? I mean, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Commissioner reports, Plan RBA.
Thank you.
It's my first day.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
That's right there.
Yes, Reverend.
The, uh, Plan RBA Executive Committee and the commission had a joint meeting out on last Thursday, and there were several things that came out of it. Uh, the executive director, Martha Schickel, shared some key things that she hopes we can do in twenty-twenty-five. The first is to develop a civic engagement innovation lab so that the nine jurisdictions can share success stories and be able to learn from each other. Uh, we are excited about that opportunity and the, and the opportunity to discuss things. We see most of them are regional. One of the things that they talked about was food insecurity, and that's a regional issue. Uh, housing affordability is really a regional issue. And, uh, we stress the fact that if it's not done right in one locality, it could create problems for the other. So having that civic engagement innovation lab is a good idea. Uh, one of the other things that, uh, the executive director would like to be able to do is have an opportunity to meet with boards in the community and be able to share some of the resources that Plan RBA has. And so I would hope that at some point, uh, we could invite, uh, Ms. Schickel and her staff to come and maybe have maybe ten minutes to share what they do. But it's a very good meeting. We look forward to twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, Reverend Hathaway. Yeah, I'm sure we can, um, obviously get them on the agenda, so, um, I certainly will let you, uh, if you want to coordinate with that, then, uh, between that and Mr. Bennett, we can, we can get you on.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Commissioner reports, uh, Mr. Lower Show?
No, sir.
Ms. Thomas?
Nothing for me.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. DeBroski, and, uh, along with your reports, uh, do you have anything from the Housing Advisory Board?
I would like to apologize. I missed the Housing Committee meeting because I was, uh, taking my daughter to the doctor that day. Uh, but, uh, I was at the, uh, July meeting, excuse me, the August meeting. Um, very good report on, um, affordable housing, not just in New Kent, but also the Richmond District as well, um, where we're going to go. I did, uh, see some notes from the previous, the meeting in September, early September for, with the, um, comprehensive plan, which I know you'll probably address here. Um, but, uh, I think we're on the right track. Uh, I'd like to, uh, like to see more, and I apologize for not, uh, not actually being able to make it to the September meeting. But, uh, other than that, no, no reports from, from my district.
Thank you. Ms. Townsend?
None today.
Reverend Hathaway?
None.
Ms. Rose?
Uh, nothing at this time.
And Mr. Moore, you have anything?
I'm good.
Yep. All right, and I'll do my usual, uh, comp plan update, uh, report. We did, uh, the committee, the, uh, comp plan update committee did meet on, uh, September sixth, last Friday. And, uh, the, uh, EPR and Todd Gordon with the EPR had sent out, um, a draft copy or draft of the, um, uh, future document, um, and asked for input from the committee members, um, to which, uh, fair numbers of us, of us did, uh, offer, um, corrections. A lot of them were factual, factual information that we, um, um, that I think we needed to correct or update. So, um, a lot of involving metrics and, you know, getting the right numbers out. And, um, and so also, we talked about the next public engagement, um, is scheduled for October twenty-second. It'll be at the middle school. Mr. Hathaway, what time did we confirm? Do you recall? Six, I believe you're correct. I, I didn't write that down on my notes, but, um, so there'll be more information out, um, and also.
It's the day after our, our, our October.
Yes.
Planning Commission meeting.
Yeah. Um, so, and the date was picked, too, for availability of, um. Yeah, so, um, so, uh, but anyway, so we'll have the, uh, public engagement, um, instead of what we did, uh, last several times of having it different locations, we're having it just at one location. So, um, so I hope it's, uh, certainly, um, everyone can make it. We encourage all the planning commissioners, of course, to come to that and, um, to see what's going on as well as, um, you know, you have an opportunity to meet with, uh, the citizens there. So again, open house format, uh, and, uh, also, we talked about the, uh, public engagement promotion to get the people there. Um, of course, there's a variety of ways to do it, including website. Uh, we're talking about, uh, postcard mailers, um, social media, email, and, and flyers that people would see at, certainly at the county government buildings. And, uh, other than that, uh, you know, we don't have a date yet where we can kick this up to the board supervisors yet, but we're getting, we're getting closer. Um, it's, uh, thinking, was it October, or maybe it was been two years, I think, since we started, so. Um, so I think we're getting close to wrapping this up and, and, uh, and then, uh, as Mr. Moore and I were discussing earlier, and then get into the meat and potatoes and maybe look at that, uh, zoning ordinance after we get this knocked out, so. Anyway, uh, that is my report, um, uh, for the evening. And now, uh, do we have staff reports?
Nothing else for the group? We've already introduced the new planning staff. We do have another person, uh, in the department, Amy Parker. She'll be senior planner. Um, you'll primarily see myself and Patrick at the, uh, planning commission meetings. Um, but obviously, you have access to all of us. Um, we do have a planning administrative assistant starting next week. His name is Aiden. Um, so he will be joining us and should be around for future meetings.
Thanks, sir. Uh, next, uh, meeting schedule, so our next meeting, uh, will be Monday, October twenty-first, uh, twenty-twenty-four, six-thirty PM here in the boardroom. And with that, I hear a motion for adjournment. All right. Thank you, Ms. Townsend, and we are adjourned.